Mr. Bishop?
Present.
Present.
Mr. Lozo?
Present.
Dr. Page?
Excused.
Ms. Peliquin?
Present.
Mr. Tomum?
Present.
Mr. Wang?
Present.
Six present, one excused.
We have a quorum. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Southbridge School Committee meeting Tuesday, May 2nd, 2017, 7:00 PM. First, third agenda item is public input. Is anybody from the public, is there anybody from the public that would like to address the school committee? I, uh, oh, go ahead. State your name and address.
Hi, Ray Garcia, 497 Chalton Street, resident, taxpayer, voter. I got, I don't know whether the school committee or the superintendent or if there's a principal around can answer a question for me. What happened last Tuesday at Assembly? Segregating the kids. I'd like to know why and for what reason. Southbridge High School or Southbridge Middle High School. We're in Southbridge.
Are you talking about the school committee meeting?
No, no, they had an assembly at the high school. Mostly, I think it was mostly seniors because most of the kids that stopped in my house was all seniors. And they had an assembly, then they had another assembly. All the, all my granddaughters French, all the French, Italians, and all them went our way and the Spanish kids stayed in the assembly and went and had another assembly, a private one like. And some of those kids stopped at the house. They were embarrassed. Their friends they were sitting next to left and they stayed there. So I'd like to know why there was two assemblies for the same thing.
Are you telling me there were two assemblies, one for Spanish and one for the other students?
Apparently, because my daughter didn't, my granddaughter didn't know what, because she wasn't Spanish, but the Spanish kids go, yeah, they were held back with another assembly.
This is the first I hear of it. I gotta be honest with you, I don't know anything about it.
I heard it last Tuesday for an hour with a bunch of teenagers in my house getting it off their chest, knowing that I do come here filming and stuff and do know some of the high school, well, some of yous on the boards, I do vote. And I said, they were, for an hour, and they usually come in, say hi, they go watch TV or do something, they were all just upset about it. They were upset about it.
Was it, was it an assembly for seniors?
Mostly seniors. I believe it was all seniors. But why was it segregated? That's what they want to know. They end up right after school going to track and everything altogether. There wasn't two separate buses or anything like, they all go together. So why was it, they want to know why the assembly was segregated. We've never had that in this town, segregation. We haven't had it. The biggest thing is, uh, they all said it, and I'm talking future voters, future, hopefully they stay here and buy houses. Uh, the last two years, they said, school system went like this since the state came in compared to before. They can't go talk to a teacher because they don't know if the teacher's gonna be here tomorrow or next week or next year. So they're, they're all, you know, my granddaughter actually told me, she goes, who would've known this? Ahead of time, she goes, I would've went to Shepherd Hill or Bay Pass or Tantascwa. I went to state, she thought Southbridge was great, my daughter, Lyles went here, my daughter went here, she does good. Like I said, the last two years, it's just gone downhill.
Does anybody have an answer for this gentleman this evening? Well, I mean, I think it's a reasonably basic question. What took place? Why were there two assemblies? I have known nothing of this until 30 seconds ago. Uh, is, I think this man deserves an explanation.
I could've brought her here tonight.
Was the?
Because she didn't turn 18 Friday. I'm getting old.
Was this how during the school day?
School day, yes.
School, yeah.
So what, so you're saying that during the school day before 2:15?
Yep.
There were people coming to your house that should be in school?
No, no, no. After.
Their assembly?
After their assembly, after school, they went to track practice, they all stopped in the house. The kids in my neighborhood in Chalton Street stopped into vent. Like I said, her best friend felt embarrassed because they were sitting together during the first assembly. My granddaughter got up and left and the friend stayed there. You know, so she felt embarrassed. They've been together for four years. They sleep over each other's houses and everything. So they were upset of why there was a, never had that. So I'm wondering, you know, why all of a sudden we're segregating the kids? We've never had this in this town, segregation. Everybody walked the streets, they went to school back in the day, uh, never had this problem. Like I said, and they all said the same thing, since the state came in, they can't wait to graduate, just to get out.
Madam Receiver?
Well, I believe there's a reasonable answer and I'm just gonna get a little bit more information so that I can speak factually and I will let you know as soon as I do.
I'll tell you what, I've been doing this for four years, well, longer than this, but four years too. I will see you after, give you my cellphone number, which is always on. Uh, four years ago, superintendent we had, I gave it to her, I think more than I gave it to my customers, never called back and I've always waited. I've gone up, always busy. Um, I will give it to you after and I'm, I'm home all week. I will wait for an answer. The phone, like I said, is on me all the time.
I, I think we have our answer.
Yeah, I got an answer.
Um, why don't you? Dan, will you introduce yourself, please?
Hi, Dan Wally, I'm the STEM Curriculum Coordinator for grades six through 12. I just spoke with the Assistant Principal at the high school and they kept the senior Hispanic students there at the assembly because Quin sigamon Community College is running a program for Hispanic students on applying to college and going to college. And there's an event that is happening on Thursday and Friday this week that is specifically around Hispanic families and students. That's why they kept those students there.
Thank you.
So why didn't they let the parents or people know?
Yes, I can explain, that's what I-
Are you saying that the white kids can't go to this program? Is that it? Why, why was the separation? I'm trying to follow this.
Um, I'll be happy to answer it because that's what I thought it was. So Quin sigamon Community College is specifically trying to increase the number of Hispanic and Latino students who are attending two and four-year colleges. And they're making specific outreach to those students because historically we have had very low numbers of Hispanic students attending college. And so they have developed this program and are targeting Hispanic students and families to increase those numbers. That was the purpose of the assembly.
And that's how it was just explained to me, too.
The event is coming up. I forget what the date is.
I believe it's at Thursday and Friday of this week for Hispanic families to come in.
We've historically had, like I said, low numbers of students, Hispanic students going off to two and four-year colleges and we've historically had a low family engagement of Hispanics and this is not unusual.
So, so I'm to understand that one of our state institutions is targeting certain demographics?
Minority students who are generally underrepresented in two and four-year colleges specifically from Southbridge.
I'm well aware of it, but every person in Massachusetts pays the same level of taxation. I'm just stunned that our colleges and universities are identifying some students and reaching out to some students and not all students.
Well-
That's my concern.
That's, that's a fair concern. I would just like to explain, I believe the whole purpose and focus is to ensure equity. And there are many students who don't have opportunity of access to certain programs. Their parents don't have the knowledge or wherewithal to be able to navigate the college application process, whereas many students from other demographics and other subgroups do. And so this, I believe, is gonna be a great thing for Southbridge because the majority of our students are Latino, Puerto Rican now, and we are trying to increase the number of students going to college and we're trying to increase the number of students graduating.
Okay, I, excuse me, Mr. Lozo.
What?
I believe the number of students on free and reduced lunch in the district is 100% at this time. All of our students have the same financial difficulties, it would appear, white, black, Hispanic. I'm, I'm not, I'm not even gonna put my personal feelings into this, I'm gonna be addressing this later on this evening. This is unbelievable.
I, I just wanna make one clarification, not 100% of our students are all on the same playing field when it comes to economics. They simply are not.
Does the federal government give us 100% or whomever, the state, federal, 100% free and reduced lunch in our district?
They absolutely do, but that is a very different conversation.
Well, I thank you for the answer. I wish they would've explained it that day, but they don't talk to the students because they are young adults. Like I said, she's 18. That means she can sign up and vote.
And I'm sorry for the misunderstanding.
I'm looking at people that might want to talk to her because she talks to me a lot and I never miss voting. Um, and she's a military child. My son just finished 20 years in the service. And I got another one that's gonna be finishing 20 years next year. So, yeah, she's got the same problems as everybody else. Not the money, but the government will have to because he put 20 years in. Like I said, I wish it was explained that day to, to the young adults. I'm not gonna call them kids because they are young adults. They're all 18 years old now, most of them, 17 and a half, 18 this year.
Well, thank you. I will give that feedback to the high school principal and if ever again there's a need for clarification, by all means, call my office. I would've had that answer to you that day.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Like I said, that's all we want, is answers.
Thank you.
We, I've been here, married for over 40 years, so I've been paying out to the school system. Um, I just want answers. I want to make sure it's running right. And like I said, what I get right now, the state's in, they can't wait to get out. Not a very good job.
I think, I think that the kids look at it as they're all equal.
Yeah.
But they're not being treated equally. But then every time I ask questions somewhat about why are we doing these things, I'm told that there's a new regime in Southbridge.
That isn't a good job.
And we don't understand diversity. Now, I know that you and I grew up in this town, it's been a diverse town since we came out of the womb.
Oh, yeah.
Whatever the diversity was, it was a lot of it. And now all of a sudden, Southbridge doesn't know anything about diversity. So I'm kinda shocked by what's going on, but-
It's not diversity, no. Yeah, it's almost segregation.
It's a new regime.
Well, what I would say is I definitely think, I definitely think based on this conversation, there's need for education on the difference between equality and equity. And what we need to focus on is providing equity rather than equality because not everyone is the same. There are people with different needs and we need to provide the needs that they have. And we have a very large population of our students that are underrepresented attending college and the focus is to get them there and to ensure that their families understand the pathways and the supports that they need to do it. And we will continue to support those families and those children.
What about the diverse popular, uh, population that we have that is white, poor, and they live in a three-decker and they don't know how to fill out those forms and they don't have this special program? Why are they being basically taken out of the equation?
They're not. In fact, we are having FAFSA signup workshops for all families this year. We're having college fairs, different programs that we've instituted that we've been working with guidance, so there is opportunities for all children.
But why were they taken out of that very important meeting?
Because this, this was a program, absolutely.
I have a question for Mr. Lozo. Sorry.
Go ahead, go.
Um, are you saying that we should've declined the participation in this program?
No, I don't understand why we are creating this since, since the state got here. It's a division between the Spanish community and the rest of the community. And the state has done this very frequently since we've started with the state. And I'm sitting here and I'm looking, I'm saying, wow, I just don't understand it maybe. Maybe it's just me, I don't understand it, I want to understand.
I feel like we're jumping to conclusions without knowing the particulars of what the program entails, so.
And I'm happy to bring Quin sigamon here to explain the program, just like Worcester State College has us participating in a program to increase this number of students of color in the workforce of education and because they're very underrepresented and we do need teachers who look like our children, who come from the same background as our children. And the majority of our children are Puerto Rican Latino. So I guess my question is, is when we are approached by colleges to partner with us to provide equitable access and opportunities these children never would've had, I agree with Mr. Wang's question, do we say no?
So, excuse me, if, if, if a college came in and said, I want to offer a program for only white students, we would, we would jump on that bandwagon as well? I'm having a hard time and I'm gonna be honest with you. I've been here longer than anybody in this, in the public school systems of Southbridge. The racial issues, to say we don't have racial issues, that, that would just be crazy because, but for the most part, we don't. And what I see personally, and I, and this has been bothering me for a long time, is that the districts that the Commonwealth has taken over have a large Hispanic population. And I see us, the state deliberately moving more and more towards segregated schools in the state. And I'm really, really concerned about this, about this, this type of segregation. And I hate to use that word, but I gotta be honest with you, it's what I see from somebody looking in.
Are you all set?
I'm all set. Like I said, I, it has built up to this point. And last Tuesday was when these young adults came over and just talked about it and they're all saying the same thing. And like I said, they've been coming over my house, they'll be down this summer in the pool in the backyard, the whole bit. Uh, they all hang around together and the school goes and separates them. There's something wrong with that picture. It never happened, like I said, Mr. Lozo, my kids went through this system, they're all doing well, never, no problem. Ours is like you, literally, you know, coached and we did it for a long time. We never had a problem with the kids, never did, whether, what nationality or color they were. Never had problems. All of a sudden, the last two years, like I said, they all said the same thing, last two years, we can't wait to get out because the system went down.
Well, thank you very much for your question. I appreciate it. Is there any further public comment?
Would any other people like to speak or address the school committee? If there's nobody else, I would like to relinquish the gavel as chairman. Mr. Bishop, Speaker of the Citizen. The reason why I relinquished the gavel was because I was asked by a family member to bring something up and it's improper under parliamentary procedure to speak as a chairman. Um, and plus, the chairman's announcements have been taken out by the receiver, so I don't have that platform. So anytime I have to speak, whether it be as a member or as a citizen, I have to relinquish the gavel, it would be the proper procedure. The reason why I'm here, Madam Receiver, is a quick question. I have a nephew that is on his fifth math teacher as a sophomore at Southbridge High, fifth. The reason why he has a fifth teacher, because the fourth teacher was in class and she or he, I'm not even sure, it was a male or female, his teacher yelled at a student. The student went home, told mommy, and mommy Googled the teacher. And lo and behold, up came a lawsuit down in Queens, New York. And, um, this teacher was at, number four, was escorted out of the building. Can you please explain to me why this teacher wasn't vetted or background checked or some sort of checkup? Because there were, there was a policy manual before you got here and a procedure on, on vetting teachers. And, you know, this is, this is the kid's business. And this is a very dangerous precedent for the Southbridge school system to say, oops. Can you please explain to me what the process is when you hire or how we vet our teachers to allow something like this to slip into the Southbridge school system?
So the process hasn't changed. We still follow the policy as it was prior to receivership. Teachers are vetted through our new Talent Ed website when teachers apply. They're vetted, three references are called, including a direct supervisor. My understanding of this particular teacher is those references were called. I'm happy to let Mr. Wally, who's over the math department, if you'd like to comment at all, about the specific teacher, but the process was followed and New York was called.
The second, the second question that my nephew had was, we, the state said we would not lose our traditions in Southbridge at the high school. And one of the traditions took a major kick. Uh, we are not, we are not playing Tantascwa Warriors in the upcoming football season, which was an interesting thing because it's one of the biggest rivalries. It's a bigger, um, income for the schools, more than Thanksgiving Day game. Um, there is a Ted Father Memorial Award given, the playoff that was playing for Southbridge High Wells back in the day, in 1934, historically went to the MVP. The Farland family resides in Sturbridge and most of the family lives and plays in Sturbridge. This rivalry's been going on for a good many years. The state comes in and all of a sudden, even some of our athletic rivalries that are financially good for us, they are excellent for the, for the rallies and stuff, and all of a sudden, it's just like, no big deal, it's gone. Can you please explain to me how that happens?
I can speak with the athletic director and answer your question and get back to you. I'm happy to also answer your questions outside of school committee meetings if you'd like to come see me as well.
My job isn't to do your job. My job isn't to do the athletic director's job, but the one thing that I do know is any athletic director that has sat in that chair knows that the Bartley game and the Tantascwa game are scheduled and then we play whoever wants to play. I think maybe, you know, the athletic director has to step it up or step it out because again, here goes Southbridge, losing its traction for its traditions and its enrichment that all the kids used to enjoy. Including the Hispanic students are upset, so I don't know if that'll make a difference to you. They're very upset that they're not playing Tantascwa. They know that the, the Pioneers play the Warriors and it's a great rivalry. So from Pop Warner youth football all the way up to their senior, it's probably one of their biggest memories. Just feel bad that it's been taken away from them. Thank you.
I, I'd like to ask the, in reference to what the previous speaker said.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
Um, just point of order, I just want to remind us that we have-
State's your point of order.
Um, I just want to remind us that we have a three-minute limit on, um, public comment and I would appreciate us keeping to that. Are there any other?
I believe the chair has, has the right to extend that.
If you're speaking as a citizen, Mr. Bishop, you have to go to the podium. This is a public input.
Oh.
So if, if we have any other-
You have to relinquish your chair. I don't need an education, a parliamentary procedure, ma'am. If you need to go to, you have to go to the podium.
I just have a basic question. Does the Southbridge Public Schools fingerprint new employees?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to, on the public input, anybody else? No further discussion, moving on to discussion of the minutes.
I have a, I have a comment before we do that.
Excuse me, Co, I'm sorry.
Um, it was right to my attention that we haven't taken the pledge of allegiance yet.
I can't hear him.
We haven't done the pledge of allegiance yet.
Oh geez, sorry about that. Pledge of allegiance? Moving on to discussion of the minutes, March 7th, 2017. Are there any additions, corrections, or additions to the minutes of 2017? If none, moving on to new business, number five, Receiver, Superintendent's Updates. Adam Receiver.
Thank you, everyone. Um, I just wanted to extend an invitation to the school committee tonight to join us at the National Honor Society induction on May 9th at 7:00 PM at the high school in the auditorium. We have 17 new members being inducted and it would be wonderful if you could join us to celebrate these students' accomplishments. Uh, just some general announcements, I just want to give a little bit of a recap of our spring celebration and the state of the schools meeting that we had. Um, I just want to, again, thank Co, Wang, and Tanya for attending. That was a really wonderful evening and a great celebration of the good work that's happening here in Southbridge. We had over 300 participants come and join us. There were current staff there, there were families, there were retirees. We had a large cadre of Southbridge public school retired teachers, community leaders, community members, students, we're all in attendance. We had wonderful performances by our kids. The band was outstanding, the players were just tremendous. Uh, there were school club displays, artwork. I want to just send a special thank you to Ellen Finelli and Food Services for providing world-class refreshments. You would've thought that, um, a catering company out of Boston had done the spread. It was truly amazing. Um, the entertainment, again, was just outstanding. The remarks by the town manager and Chairman Carrasco were just really, uh, super. Uh, you have a copy of the presentation that I gave that night. I just want to point out some highlights. Um, on pages five and six shows some improvements in technology. This year alone, we've rolled out 1,400 Chromebooks for students. All of the buildings, as you can see, went from zero, nearly zero Wi-Fi access to we are fully, um, we have fully put Wi-Fi in all of the buildings and all of the classrooms. Jonathan Perrin has just done an excellent job in really upgrading our technology and our infrastructure. On page 17, you can see the secondary redesign results that are resulting in improved pathways. And before the meeting, I passed out to you a course outline, a new pathway that we're going to be offering at Southbridge High School that is unrivaled and is nowhere else in the state with our partnership with Arrow Venture. From ninth grade through the 12th grade, students are gonna be able to engage in an aviation science pathway, starting with Introduction to Aviation and Aerospace and going on to Exploring Aviation and Aerospace in ninth grade. At the end of ninth grade, they're gonna be able to choose a culminating pathway to engage in from 10th through the 12th grade, down to Pilot USA, UAS pathway. And at the culmination of the 10th grade, those that choose the pilot pathway can then specialize in the pilot or UAS pathway. And they'll do a pilot capstone, UAS capstone, and then aerospace engineering capstone as one of their pathways. So this is really an opportunity that is nowhere else in the state and we're excited to partner with Arrow Venture and, and very grateful for that partnership. We also have a secondary redesign committee that is working on creating more pathways for students. Uh, we've already gone into discussions with Harrington Hospital to create a medical pathway for students to graduate with a medical certificate as well as their high school diploma so that we move closer to our vision of ensuring that students not only graduate with the essential skills for, for college, but also to be career-ready and graduate engaged citizens. On page 18, you can see the increased focus on STEM education at the middle level. We sent two of our teachers and our STEM coordinator to MIT this past winter break and we are in the process of setting up a whole entire new STEM maker space at the middle school, which is gonna be really exciting for the kids. On the next great page, just, we talked about the success of Southbridge Academy. Um, it's going very, very well and we've gotten a lot of great feedback from parents that students are really, um, performing as students in ways they were not able to in the traditional setting. On page 21, just a highlight on professional development, our teachers this year have engaged in over 10,000 hours of professional development and we are really starting to see those results in the classroom. Um, we're seeing improvements, excuse me, in climate and culture. Recent data at the middle school, just in the past quarter, has shown a 32% decrease in referrals and that's due to a lot of the hard work of the teachers. And I also just want to point out in the presentation, the math data from the elementary schools are literally showing that students in the warning category on incredibly rigorous assessments are being cut in half. And that's happening because of excellent instruction that's going on in the classrooms, curricular improvements, and a lot of the professional development that the teachers have been attending, not only after school and on Saturdays, but they attended all summer long. So I just want to give a huge shout out to our teachers, they're doing tremendous work. The dual-language program is well underway to be rolled out in the fall for kindergarten and grade one. Applications are coming in from families. Uh, we're going to be at Maxon kindergarten and it looks like we're gonna see choice, students choicing in for first grade as well. Um, students are gonna be selected by lottery and we're in the process of hiring teachers and developing a curriculum for the dual-language program. And we will continue to add classes for dual-language at each grade level every single year until we graduate students from Southbridge High School that are biliterate and bilingual and that will be a skill that will take them and prepare them for a global future. Grade one, this is an important piece of information and I'll be sending out a formal notification to the community, but we will be moving grade one to Eastford Road due to spacing issues at the other two elementary schools and just to create a solid early learning center. Um, we felt that this was the best move and we got input from parents and teachers and other, uh, members of the community and it was, there was a lot of, um, support to make the move. The new compensation program was rolled out to staff recently. Our summer professional development opportunities are in process. Summer school planning is well underway. We're gonna have some really great opportunities for kids. We're going to have some really great opportunities for kids, both in enrichment and credit recovery this year. The superintendent's roundtable, I also want to bring your attention to, part of our charge this year was to craft core values for the district. And I just want to share with you some of these core values that were created by a community membership group of various stakeholders. So we have business owners, we have teachers, we have students, we have just a variety of people on this committee, and this is what they believe should be at the core of what we do here in Southbridge. They, the Southbridge School System believes that schools should inspire students to dream, encourage perseverance, meet the needs of each individual student, have high expectations for all, have open doors to students and families, provide rigorous and challenging academic experiences for all students, educate and support the whole child, spirit, body, and mind. A successful student is one who's confident in their ability and potential to be an engaged citizen, experience academic successes, build positive relationships with others, be a lifelong learner, be a proud member of the Southbridge Public Schools, become ready for college and career. And their values also reflect that a supportive community has high expectations for the entire school community, builds partnerships with schools, embraces and celebrates diversity without discrimination, demonstrates kindness, mutual respect and acceptance, is visible and involved in the school community. And so these core values, this draft is now going to go out to the entire school community and to various stakeholders, families, to get feedback on so that we can finalize who we are and what we believe as a school system, and then this will become part of the hiring process, and we will only hire people who are aligned with these types of values and beliefs that we believe will move our school into the future. I thought that the superintendent's roundtable did an outstanding job with drafting these core values. It took us about two or three sessions, and they did just wonderful work. So we're looking forward to getting feedback on that. The school district policy review continues with the assistance of the Mass Association of School Committees. I want to, again, thank Ms. Peliquin for joining us on that and helping to update our policies and procedures. We did a day-long emergency protocol training that took place in March. Follow-up training is going to take place in the next few weeks. Instructional rounds have been taking place in all of the schools, and we're learning a lot about patterns of what is and isn't happening in the classrooms and reasons why our performance has been the way it is. I've been lucky enough to be facilitating anywhere between twenty and thirty district leaders and teachers going into classrooms as teams, looking at specific areas of practice, and really identifying what is working and what is not working, and what we need to do to support teachers to provide high-quality instruction in every classroom every day for the Southbridge Public Schools, and it's been great work. Tomorrow, we're going to be at West Street School to do their instructional rounds. So the 2017-18 school year calendar was released. We have increased professional development time. The school day will be extended next year. You'll also see that in thirty-one, page thirty-one of the presentation. Teachers are going to report to school on August 22nd, and we have a week of professional development planned. Students return to school on August 29th. Next end-of-year events, prom is next Friday at the Oliver Wright Tavern in Sturbridge. Senior finals are May 22nd to 26th. Wednesday, the 31st, senior class night at the Middle High School. Friday, the 2nd of June, graduation. We have a hundred and seventeen seniors this year, and we're slated, if all goes according to plan, eighty-four percent of them will graduate with a high school diploma and sixteen percent with a certificate of attainment. And finally, the last day of school for this school year is going to be Monday, June 19th, and that will be a half-day for students and teachers. And last but not least, we have a new Director of Family and Community Engagement. Abiyan Gutierrez is going to begin on June 1, and this role is critical to increasing family outreach and engagement. And that's all my announcements. Chairman.
We go on to budget update. Mr. Dan Didi.
Dan. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we get into the FY18 budget presentation, just a couple of quick updates on the FY17 budget and also on the 18th budget book. We received bids for a busing contract earlier in April. I plan to make the award by the end of this week. We had one vendor who submitted a bid. It wasn't without the old call it's try, so to speak, to increase competition, but it didn't work out. Secondly, also, our audit district was removed from the larger procurement, so there were two procurements. As you may know, with special education, transportation, you're not held to the procurement standards under 30B, you have tremendous flexibility with that procurement. Again, I plan to, there, there, there was competition, and I plan to wrap that up by the end of the week, this week. We are in the home stretch of FY17, beginning the process of closing out the year in anticipation of a question asked, and these numbers are as of this morning, legal. Our legal expenditures, actually, I received two invoices this morning for about fifteen thousand dollars, so the year-to-date is approximately one hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy-four cents, and that is through the end of March, early April. Our unemployment costs have stabilized somewhat. Again, we are over budget, so we need to make those adjustments by transfers as we begin to close out and reduce encumbrances for FY17. Just want to jump ahead very quickly into FY-
Can I just, was there a number for the unemployment?
Sure. Year-to-date expenditures, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand and change.
Thank you.
And just one final comment to jump ahead into FY18. The cherry sheet has been updated with revised figures, given the House Ways and Means budget. The Senate numbers will be coming out very shortly, and as you know, they go to compromise and they bring home the bacon, so to speak. Because the numbers have been much more refined now relative to the opening of the new charter school, there is much better data at this time. So the Senate numbers reflect an assessment of approximately nine hundred and eight thousand dollars. The reimbursement, though, is approximately six hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars, and that's roughly seventy-five percent reimbursement in FY18. And again, those numbers vary significantly from the House, one from the governor's numbers because we have much better data. The numbers here for the, both the assessment and then the reimbursement is based upon the assumption that there are sixty-seven students potentially enrolling in that charter school. That is a fluid number, and the actual enrollment is going to vary up until school starts in the fall. And as those numbers fluctuate, so too will the assessment and the reimbursements fluctuate as well. And I also want to point out that with the House budget, the District's Chapter 70 also went up approximately sixty-four thousand and change. So that gets, there was a slight variance between the assessment and the revenue, but because of the additional sixty-four thousand dollars and change, that closes the variance to approximately one hundred and ninety-seven thousand for FY18. And in working with the town accountant, she thought that that number was much, was manageable in 18. The challenge becomes, as we've discussed in the past, what's going to happen in FY19, doing large part to the fact that, given the current formula, the reimbursement for charter schools is significantly reduced, and that's the high water box that we're actually planning. And as you'll see in the presentation, there's one quick slide that speaks to the district being proactive and looking to generate some revenue, potentially in 18, for, if nothing else, for 19. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's my quick wrap-up.
Thank you, Dan.
All right. I'm just going to take a moment to give you an abbreviated version of the budget presentation that we gave to the Budget Subcommittee or the Finance Subcommittee last Tuesday evening. I'm pleased to report that our budget was passed unanimously. This budget reflects a two-and-a-half percent increase over last year. We are the only department that the town manager is putting forward for an increase, and I just want to publicly thank Mr. Sanangelo for his support and for just continuing to be a positive force to helping us improve our schools. The budget presentation, very quickly, is going to basically follow four key areas: the budget guidelines that we developed that guided the work and where we are going to allocate resources, new initiatives in the FY18 budget, assumptions and reclassifications, and just a history of funding that we've seen in Southbridge over the last few years, and some closing comments. The budget was put forward to Town Council at the number twenty-six million, seven hundred eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars, as I said, a two-and-a-half percent increase. The budget guidelines that the leadership team developed that guided our work have four key areas. One is around creating supportive, personalized learning environments in schools and classrooms, developing and retaining high-qualified, diverse teachers, leaders, and support staff, ensuring curriculum instruction and assessment promote student growth development, and maximize learning time, and then redesign of the organization and related systems to ensure high-quality management, efficient resource allocation, and the fidelity of implementation of the objectives. And these should sound very familiar to you because these are priorities in the turnaround New initiatives under Budget Guideline 1, creative, supportive, and personalized learning environments include the implementation of the dual-language program at Eastford Road, the potential relocation, which was last week, and we have decided to move forward, so we will be relocating grade one. The expansion of music and arts program with the hiring of a 1.0 FTE music teacher. This is going to allow us to create a pathway for our music program from the elementaries up through the middle and the high school. Our band program is flourishing. It's very small, though, and so we want to really get kids hooked on music and the arts much earlier, and we're going to begin that pipeline and process next year through the offering of band and lessons during the school day. Also, the expansion of Southbridge Academy to include SPS students, and we're going to be getting started in the planning process of looking at the possibility of enlisting choicing into Southbridge Academy, and I'll talk a little bit more about that as a possible revenue generator. Priority area two has to do with development and retention of high-quality staff. The revised compensation model for teachers is going to be a great recruitment tool for us, aggressive external recruitment program for teachers, as well as implementation of additional time for teachers starting in August 2017, which is focused on professional development. We have an additional seven days planned for professional development next year for teachers to continue to improve and hone their craft. The next budget priority has to do around curriculum instruction and assessment that promotes students' growth. We're looking at more and more partnerships that will provide experiential learning and community offerings and internships in the community. We have a brand-new high school schedule that has two static blocks at the end of the day that will afford kids the opportunity, upon gaining their mass core requirements, to go out into the community and actually do live, authentic internships, which we're very excited about. The creation of a Family Resource Center, which we're going to be opening at the end of the year, including the hiring of a Director of Family Engagement, and also expanding learning pathways such as the AeroVenture, Aeroscience Pathway for Southbridge students are just some of the new initiatives we're going to see in FY18. In terms of redesigning the organization, there's extended learning time for students next year, a half an hour in grades K through eight. The implementation of Aspen, we are going to have a new student information system. We're already in the process of migrating from I-Pass to Aspen, which will provide a lot more information for staff, for administration, but also there is a parent component that will provide live information to parents anytime, anywhere, and that should be a great addition to help us with data. Also, we're implementing extensive new hiring and onboarding system as well. Dan's talked a little bit about the state aid, so I'm not going to go into that and repeat what he just said. There are a few new positions that are going to be a part of the FY18 budget. There are six new positions. One is a Sped Interventionist Teacher, an SEL Classroom Teacher, a Music Teacher, an Additional Interventionist, an Alternative Learning Center Supervisor for the Middle High School, another Adjustment Counselor, another ELL Teacher, and a Director of Family Engagement. Other positions that we're going to be adding by reallocating and reclassifying existing financial resources is an Assistant Principal for Eastford Road, a Dual-Language Teacher, Translator, Family Outreach, Coordinator of Elementary Education, Academic Specialist, and an Assistant Superintendent of Strategy and Operation. Now, these are all fluid and subject to change based on the continued budget discussions and budget process, but these are some of the initiatives that we should see moving forward. I just want to bring your attention to this graph. What this shows you is since FY6 to FY15, what the per pupil spending has been in relation to the state. And interestingly enough, you can see between FY6 and FY10, Southbridge actually exceeded the state average in terms of per pupil expenditure. And since FY10, from, starting from FY11 through FY15, and I believe this has continued even to FY17, the state started to supersede the per pupil expenditure to Southbridge. I thought that that was very interesting. And then when you look at the town funding over the last four years, the funding to the schools has actually declined one and a half percent over the last four years. And I believe we're on a different pathway and a different trend now. There's been a tremendous amount of cooperation over the last two budget cycles between the town and the schools, and a lot more confidence between the town and the schools, and I do see a shift, of course, in the town funding in the schools. And that is only going to help us strengthen and attract more and more families and students to come and be a part of our great programs. The next steps, coming up, May 16th, we have a Town Council meeting at 7:00 PM here for the public hearing, and that's my abbreviated version of the budget. Thank you, Dan.
Mr. Didi, are you completed?
I am, Mr. Chair. Just one comment, if I may, just about the budget book. You have, and I realize many of you have received that this evening, obviously be happy to answer any questions as you go through it. I just want to bring to your attention that I think it's a little bit different than we see in the past. There are ten different cost centers, if you will, and within each cost center, there's a narrative for that building or for that program. In terms of the five, the middle school, high school, and then the three elementary buildings is also a staff analysis that the principals and their staff prepared. You'll see that for central admin in the back of the central office section as well. There's a section in there that speaks to revenues. Again, revenues are a fluid process. The revenues that are in there are based upon projections. Back in January, we used the governor's House One numbers, even though they have been revised numbers. Since then, we use the House One numbers. It does lower numbers for building the 18 budget. So again, as you go through that, be happy to respond to any questions to guide you through any of that.
Mr. Bishop?
Are we allowed to ask questions?
What's that?
Are we allowed to ask questions on this document?
Yes.
All right, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Didi for his preparation of this document. This is a-
Quite a thought.
I've been through budgets for a number of years, and I wish we had seen it sooner, but I understand that, you know, time is what it is. I'm going to ask some questions. Fortunately, I've looked at these for decades, so I know exactly what I'm looking for, and I'd just like to ask you some questions. First of all, I've never seen in budgets before a line item entitled "Unclassified" to the tune of a million, twenty-six thousand dollars. That's something totally I've never experienced in thirty-five, forty years of this business.
So through the chair, the unclassified, and actually, that's the cumulative value of the line, as I talked about in previous presentations. We built the FY18 budget by throwing everything into the kitchen sink. We estimated our operating budget. We used grants, revenues, capital funds. The cumulative value of that was approximately thirty-four million dollars. If you follow that line all the way across, there's going to be a net of approximately four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I purposely used that line as the placeholder for the new positions for- I purposely used that line as the placeholder for the new positions for FY '18.
Okay, that's a very reasonable explanation. Thank you. Also, if I could move now, Dan, to line item 1,200, contracted services, $200,000. The notes say DESI contract, salary and benefits, shift from salary. Are we paying DESI $200,000 to be here?
Through the chair, that figure reflects the amount that the DESI bills the district for the receiver's salary and benefits. That's an adjusted figure for FY '18 to reflect actuals for FY '17. It's a contracted service.
Well, I think that's, I'm going to just speak to that for a moment. I think a lot of people, when DESI showed up up at that gym, the auditorium at the old high school, and I think a lot of people were under the assumption that they were coming here with bagloads of money. The reality is, we're sending them bagloads of money. And I just want the taxpayers to understand that that's what's happening here.
If I--
Go ahead. I'll sit down.
If I may, just very quickly, the operating budget is set locally, and as we've stated throughout the process, and as noted earlier this evening, we have received tremendous support from the town for FY '18 while other town departments have received zero. And I believe for the third consecutive year, the district, for probably three consecutive years, has received an increase in this year. It's approximately 2.5%, which translates into approximately $653,000. We have received, we do receive this year tremendous support through a number of state and federal grants. Those are in the book. Those are in my revenue projections as well for next year. Couple of big numbers. Number one, and again, these are the fund codes in my head. $615,000 for what's called Fund 323. It's analogous to the Title I grant. Another approximately $302,000 for what's called Fund Code 511. So there's, there are tremendous supports that we are receiving to support the great work that everyone's doing.
And there is another grant that's coming from the state over the next three years in the tune of about $1.9 million to support secondary redesign. So the state has definitely supported this work and has sent bagloads of money.
And please don't misunderstand me. I'm not sitting here, I'm not here tonight to play let's beat up the finance director. This is an unbelievable job you do, and I understand it. I just want the taxpayers and the people to understand where their dollars are going. I'm going to ask you a couple more, okay?
I understand. No, I--
$300,000 in capital. Is that, what are we doing with that for $300,000?
So through the chair, in your budget book, in Section 2, I believe it is, there is a delineation of the capital cost. The capital cost, in essence, that is the value of free cash that the town is going to allocate to the district. Of that $300,000, approximately $148,000 and change is dedicated to technology upgrades. And then the balance is for upgrading curriculum materials at the middle high school, and also there's approximately $121,000 and change that supports Year 2 of our Lenovo lease, the Chromebooks lease for Year 2, for $300,000. You will also see in there, there is a six-year capital plan that the leadership team developed through fiscal year 2021, I think it was, '22. I apologize. That speaks again to both technology upgrades and also building upgrades as well.
And I, you know, as our buildings, you know, we do have a four or five-year-old building up on Tory Road, but our elementary schools, their last renovation was in the early '90s, so, you know, there are painting and windows and things, but I just want the taxpayers to know that we are protecting those buildings to the best of our abilities and providing services to our students. My final question, and I don't know, maybe it's just a line item move here. I mean, I was just curious, I'm looking at the 2100 line items, and I can't find any place where there are salaries for the high school principal, high school secretaries. Where has that have been?
It's further down in the budget. There are actually, and I don't know why, but historically, there are two lines in the budget for the high school principal and secretaries. There is one that is dedicated to the high school, and then there's a second section towards the end of the budget that speaks to shared resources, and you'll find those figures in that section there.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to be going through this, and I think probably at the next meeting in June, I may have some additional. I mean, it's a comprehensive, I mean, this is quite a document for anybody sitting there this evening. I mean, we were given this at five or 10 minutes of seven, and I mean, this is, I mean, it's this thick. I mean, we're trying to go through this, and again, I understand that the receiver is in full charge of the budget. However, we do answer to the taxpayers as we are elected. So I just wanted to, I just want everything out there that we can possibly tell the people.
And I did make the offer last week to get the books to everyone. I did have two counselors come in and pick up the books. I regret that I would have run around on Sunday afternoon to hand deliver, but the offer was there for you to pick up the books last week and give you some time to review them prior to this evening. No one came by, so I brought them in tonight.
Great. Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Didi. You mentioned that we have our Chromebooks on lease. Do we take possession of those at the end of the lease?
Through the chair, there's a dollar buyout, and what we'll most likely do is upgrade the equipment two years down the road.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If no further questions, thank you very much. Moving on to C, confirm next regularly scheduled meeting, June 6, 2017. No discussion on that. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 6, Members Forum. Any members who would like to speak at this time? Mr. Val?
Yeah, I just would like to say that it was quite a presentation that was done there at the middle school. It was wonderfully attended, and a lot of people were very happy seeing what they heard. So, good job. Congratulations.
Any other discussion by any of the school committee members?
I hate to dominate the meeting, Mr. Lozlo, but I don't know, maybe I woke up on the wrong side of the bed. I don't know. I hope that next year, our legal expenses of $121,000 and our unemployment of $358,000 again this year. I mean, in the four or five years, we're knocking on $2 million in unemployment, and that's money that doesn't serve one student, one iota. And, you know, you talked about the teacher at the high school. Somebody sent me that link, too, about some teacher who came here from New York. I didn't get the whole story, but I really didn't care much about it. And as I said at a meeting or two ago, the place to stop this is at the entrance gate. Doing a better job hiring, I'm going to cut down on this half a million dollars in the last school year between legal and unemployment. And, you know, I know the receivers come out from Metro Boston. It's a challenge to find quality educators out here in south-central Massachusetts. Geographically, it's, I've hired people for many years. It's a struggle. I'm much more prepared to see us recruit, professionally develop, and most importantly, retain. Every time we lose a staff member, it just costs us so much more money. And that's just some of my thoughts. My other thing on the presentation for the state of the schools, as it was, I'm not even going to address the last page of that. I would like to, you know, we talked about grades 1 through 5, achievements and advancements. There's nothing in this document that talks about grades 6 through 12. Is anything going on that we could hang our hat on at those grade levels, Madam Receiver?
There's a lot of work that's underway in grades 6 through 12. We don't have the systematic assessment process in place and as operationalized because we began with the early grades, but that system will be in place next year, and we should be able to track how students are doing on internal assessments in the same way that we're able to do it right now with the elementary schools. We just could not take on that volume of work all at once, but those processes will be in place next year.
I think our MCAS scores will reflect the improvement or the stagnation, or hopefully not a decline. So we'll have those coming in shortly. I know the MCAS math is coming up in a couple of weeks. And finally, Dr. Hussain, today is your one-year anniversary with the Southbridge Public Schools, May 2nd. It's been a tough year, okay? I thank you for everything you try to do, and I certainly wish you the most success for the students and the community as a whole. Thank you.
Any other discussion by any other members? Further discussion, move on to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
The paper motion, the second, all of them paper. Opposed. Name of the floor, please.